We were called to order the City of Forest Park Virtual Council Work Session April 20 in 2020. I believe all of these items are below the line items. Does anybody have any discussion on his or her particular item? Or Don, do you have any discussion on any one of these items that you want to pass on to us?
Well, Don, here you see.
My kids coming in and out.
Okay, Don, we're on the items of the work session. Is there any comments that you'd like to make on any of those items on the work session?
No, I'll just kind of give a quick update on what we're doing. The master lease is a financing arrangement that's normal stuff that we normally do. We lease vehicles and we lease other equipment. We've got a budget policy ordinance that we're talking about. Ability to move money within the budget, already been authorized and budgeted by council. We're just changing my mind if we have to in an emergency with the finance director. If we agree on it, we can get, we can do it up to a certain limit. But not increase the budget at any, in any one department.
Don, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
This has been, this has been a policy. Did I understand in reading through this that this was also adopting this formally as an ordinance? Adopting the policy? Did you hear me? Don, can you hear me?
I didn't hear the question.
Okay.
I'm going to try logging in here in a minute on my phone. Because I keep getting dropped off the internet.
Can you, can you hear, can you hear me?
On the phone, that might be a better solution.
Hold on.
Or maybe John would know.
Well, it sounds, can you hear me?
Yeah.
It sounds like an administrative policy that you wouldn't need an ordinance for. But if you want to make it a permanent policy as governed by our legislature, then you would do.
Well, that's kind of what I was reading into this was that this was an administrative policy. But that this legislation would. I don't know if this would amend it, if it was in an administrative policy, it wouldn't have to be amended by council.
No, that's correct.
And that's why I thought it sounded like it was intended to make this some kind of formal council action, adopting this whole policy with this amendment in it.
Yeah, and that's why if you want to do by official ordinance to make it permanent and on the books, so to speak, that would be how you perceive. But if you want to keep it on the administrative level, legislation would not be necessary.
It's, the intent here was to do what we've always done, whatever that was. So we aren't changing anything, we were just doing what we've already always done.
Chuck, we can now see your shoulder.
Yeah, well, I know.
It looks like, okay, if I'm reading section three. It's adopting a revision to the policy. I don't, I guess it's not adopting the whole policy, it's just.
Are you speaking on oh six twenty twenty for the order in December?
Yes, the oh six twenty twenty. It's because the very first thing in, in the working memo says that the policy, the process has never been formally adopted. This ordinance establishes a formal budget policy. Which is essentially our existing process with this amendment.
Just wait until Don is on.
Okay, all right, sure.
While we're waiting for Don. I am going to, let's see, we're going to go through the work session and when we start the meeting. We're going to have exactly thirty minutes, no more. He said in mind, y'all.
You're directing that to me?
Right.
I'm directing that to anybody who's going to be talking.
Whoever's on, meant it.
I will make this as quick as I can.
No, thirty minutes. We're going to do the old, we're going to do the old Gong Show thing, go along with these posts.
Okay, I think I'm on.
Okay.
All right, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I wanted a clarification that this budget policy ordinance is doing two things. One, that it is taking this process that has never been formally adopted. And through this ordinance, number one, establishing it as a formal adopted policy. And number two, with this amendment.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted a clarification on.
Something that we've been, we've always apparently been able to move money around. But I think this is just more of the policy. That it says that there's not any issues. And it goes back to where we, the level at which we, we budget our, our budget. Hold on, let me make sure I don't. You want to drop me off at the one, you can, or just turn off my microphone. It says I'm muted, but I think it's, I think it might add some feedback. Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like it to me, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that, this is the, the policy that we've, hold on, let me turn this thing off. It's coming through my machine. I don't know why, hold on. I think I just go to another room, hold on. You're going to lose my video, but at least I can hear you.
Yeah.
Grab my stuff and go. Okay. Are you there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, okay, now I'm, I'm still here, but I went to the off, the different office. Is that computer, who knows what it's doing? Okay. So what, as we were talking, this is, yeah, this is a, we've been able to move money around within departments. If it's on, you know, from materials and supplies to contracts to whatever. And this is just formalizing that process.
Okay. Anything on any of the others, Don?
Let me get the list here, get my list back up here again. The we've got note ordinances that are basically on our refunding ordinances. Most of those, a lot of those are refunding. Various notes that we've got outstanding, we need to have those done so that, uh, we normally do one-year notes rather than long thirty-year bonds. So each year we have to go back and renew these, so this is a, a series of those. Plus for the current year as well. It adds the current stuff for the current capital projects. And that's really the main thing, and we've got a couple of accepting bids. Resolutions for some of the street program and in the purchase of the, of the police cars. So, and then the final is that resolution of intent, that just is part of the, of the note ordinances allows the if we, if we make expenditures prior to the actual finalization and closing of the loan or the notes. We can reimburse ourselves for those expenditures. And this allows us to do that. So it's just really the administrative function with that, with that resolution. Then we have appropriations ordinance, which is cleaning up some of the things we need to get cleaned up.
Okay. Any questions from anybody on any of the items, uh, lower the line items on the work session? That's all of them. Anybody? Hearing none, is any, any other comments for, uh, any other business for the work session? Hearing none. Work session is adjourned. Called to order, City of Forest Park Special Council Meeting, April twenty twenty twenty. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Brown. Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse?
I motion.
Okay, because we're doing this virtually, let's identify yourselves so that Sally can get, make sure she gets who's on to making the motion a second. Okay, so I need somebody to make a motion to excuse.
Denise Holt. I make a motion to excuse Councilman Wow.
Second.
It's been moved a second that we excuse Councilmember Brown, is there any discussion?
None.
All those in favor of the motion to excuse, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? He is excused, the item number two, new business, is there a motion?
Denise Holt, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rule requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only, ordinance number zero six dash twenty twenty through sixteen dash twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved a second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate occasions and read by title only, ordinance is number zero six twenty twenty through fifteen twenty twenty, is there any discussion?
I mean that these ordinance were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passes six zero. First item on the new business, item A. Ordinance number zero six dash twenty twenty, would the clerk please view this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number zero six dash twenty twenty. An ordinance authorizing the city manager with approval of the finance director to amend budget appropriations in the amount of, in the amount up to twenty thousand dollars to transfer appropriations within a fund revisiting the Forest Park budget policy. Revising the Forest Park budget policy.
There a motion? Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number zero six dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Holt.
The move a second that we adopt ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty, is there discussion?
Uh, yes, um, we have had an informal budget process that's never been formally adopted as a policy. This ordinance would establish this as a formal budget policy for the city. And what we would basically do is adopt our existing budget process with one amendment. And that amendment would be to allow the city manager with the approval of the finance director to modify appropriations that are unanticipated and unplanned within appropriation levels and within one fund. Those would, and the, there's also a caveat that it would not be more than twenty thousand dollars. This would not change the requirement to bring these movements within the budget back to council unless they were budget supplements or movements from one fund to another. So I would urge adoption of the, the policy or the bu, the ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, hearing no one, the clerk call the roll on zero six dash twenty twenty.
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Ordinance zero six twenty twenty passes six zero, next item B, ordinance, ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty. Court please call, uh, please read this ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number zero seven dash twenty twenty. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed seven hundred ninety-five thousand dollars street improvement bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
There a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number zero seven dash twenty twenty.
Second?
Second.
Been moved a second that we adopt ordinance zero seven twenty twenty, is there any discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this and the next four ordinances are, are annual note issuance and re-issuance. And we do each of the individual issuances separately. And we do the re-issuance of our various purpose bonds separately. And then we do a final ordinance to consolidate all of them. This one is for the issuance of a note for our street improvement bond, and I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the court please call the roll on zero seven twenty twenty?
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yeah.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown, I'm, I'm sorry, Herbie.
Yes.
And Holt.
Yeah.
Ordinance zero seven twenty twenty passes six zero. Next item C, ordinance number zero eight twenty twenty, would the clerk please read this by title only?
Ordinance number zero eight dash twenty twenty. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars parking improvement bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
There a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption of ordinance number zero eight dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Second, okay.
Been moved a second that we adopt ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty. Is there discussion?
Yes, this is a second of these ordinances, and this is for parking improvement bonds. And I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion, the clerk call the roll on zero eight dash twenty twenty?
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes. Zero eight twenty twenty passes six zero. Next item is, item D, ordinance zero nine dash twenty twenty. Court please read this ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number zero nine dash twenty twenty. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars building improvement bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
There a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to adopt ordinance number zero nine dash twenty twenty.
Is there a second? Been moved a second that we adopt ordinance zero nine dash twenty twenty, is there discussion?
Yes, this is the third of the new issuance of bonds, this time for our building improvements. I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on zero nine twenty twenty?
Ness.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Um, Sylvester.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Zero nine twenty twenty passes six zero, next, or, next item is item E, ordinance number zero ten dash twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read this by title only?
Ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed three million four hundred and forty-five thousand. That's not right. Three, three million four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, various purpose bond anticipation notes. Twenty nineteen renewal by the City of Forest Park, Ohio in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Been moved a second that we adopt ordinance zero ten dash twenty twenty, is there any discussion?
Yes, um, this is the consolidated motion from last year that consolidated all of our bond notes. And what, this is the balance that's unpaid that we are renewing, and I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance ten twenty twenty?
Sylvester.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Ordinance ten twenty twenty passes six zero, next item is item F. Uh, ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty, would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed four million three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars various purpose bond anticipation notes by the City of Forest Park, Ohio in anticipation of the issuance of bonds of the city and declaring an emergency.
There a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Oh.
Been moved a second that we adopt ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty, is there any discussion?
Yes, this is the consolidation of the last four notes into a various purpose bond so that we can go out to issue for this total amount, and I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll on eleven twenty twenty?
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty passes six zero, next item is item G, ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty. The clerk please read this ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty. An ordinance amending chapter one fifty-six comprehensive fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For the city manager as well. Now, this was not presented as an emergency.
Okay.
So.
John, what do we do? This should be first reading if it's not an emergency. So there's no vote on this one.
Correct, as long as it can wait.
Well, it would be great, it can wait, but it would be great to, um, if we could do it as emergency, but we're okay with waiting.
Okay.
Okay, uh, well, we can always, if, if, if need be done, and we have to do this sometime soon, we can always do another special meeting for that one and get it done.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's in place with the next. Yeah, because if it's not emerg, we have to wait thirty days for it to take effect.
Oh.
Okay, huh. John, what do I need, what do we need to do to vote on it today or can we?
You didn't. I'm okay with it being, I'm okay with it being a first reading.
Okay. Okay, ordinance number twelve twenty twenty is the first reading. It will be on the agenda for, for, uh, for a vote at the next regular schedule meeting or if need be, uh, special meeting prior to that. Then we will move to item number H, uh, item H, ordinance number thirteen twenty twenty. Uh, would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty. Or, an ordinance authorizing the City of Forest Park, Ohio to enter into an individual payment schedule to a master lease purchase agreement by and between PNC Equipment Finance LLC and the City of Forest Park, Ohio and an escrow agreement by and among an escrow agent, the City of Forest Park and PNC Equipment Finance LLC to finance the purchase of an ambulance for the fire department of the City of Forest Park and authorizing other documents in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
There a motion?
Diane Herbie, I would move adoption of ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty.
Second.
More.
The move a second that we adopt ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty, is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, this and the next ordinance are also kind of connected. A number of years ago, we started doing a master lease program primarily for the purchase and leasing of vehicles in the city. This one is for, as was mentioned, the purchase of a, an ambulance for the fire department. And the reason this is separate from the others is this is a five-year lease. What PNC Equipment Finance does is purchase and then lease this to us. So I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll on thirteen dash twenty twenty?
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item I, ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty. An ordinance authorizing the City of Forest Park, Ohio to enter into an individual payment schedule to a master lease purchase agreement by and between PNC Equipment Finance LLC and the City of Forest Park, Ohio and an escrow agreement by and among the escrow agent, the City of Forest Park and PNC Equipment Finance LLC to finance the purchase of patrol vehicles for the police department. Vehicle lifts, vehicle lifts for the Public Works Department and a monument. And a monument sign for the City of Forest Park. And authorizing other documents in connection therewith. And declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Irving?
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty.
Second, more?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Irving?
Yes, this is the second of these two ordinances. Uh this one is for three years. It's for the purchase of um the sign on the corner. Uh and for four vehicle lifts for the uh um. Public Works. And for three marked police explorers for the um police department. And I would urge adoption of this uh ordinance.
Is there any other discussion?
Uh I, one quick. How long have we gone through this?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that. Go ahead, Councilwoman Ness, I'm sorry, would you repeat that, please?
Yes, yes, sir. Um how long have we gone through PNC?
I'm not sure of the total number of years. This particular uh ordinance is an extension. Of uh something that was entered into in two thousand eighteen. I don't know whether we went back before then and had them earlier than that. Or if we had somebody else, or if that was the first time we started doing it.
I'm I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but I can find that for you. I know this is a master lease, so that the uh. It it's probably been in place for for a few years. But I but I'll find out the answer for that.
I mean, does that, does it change in terms of who this um lender is? Do do um is it like other um? Other financing options where where to your um the options for or the the rates or what have that would be. Before changes based on the lender?
We can, yes, we can, we can pick and choose in terms of who we go with. And normally, it's the lowest, the lowest and best bid, and that normally is. Um but then again, it also is the fact that we've got this pla- this program already in place with them. But uh. But yes, we could change that if uh if if we would uh decide to move our master lease program to someone else. But once these programs are in place. Again, this is the like the previous ordinance, that's five years, so this this program is. In in terms of a master lease, will be in in place for at least another five years. Uh because we because of the uh the amortization schedules that are already on there.
All right, thank you.
And there there have been other. There have been other um purch- the other leases that we are currently in with them from last year and the years before.
Yeah. They're really stacked.
Yeah, it's like, yeah.
Once one starts, you still have at least a a minimum of one year, but.
One or, yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk call the roll on ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty?
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yeah.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yeah.
Ordinance fourteen twenty twenty passes six zero. Next item is item J, uh. Ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty. Uh the clerk please call, please read this one by title only.
Ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty. Amending annual twenty twenty appropriation ordinance. Zero two dash twenty twenty.
Uh Sally, is this one to be voted on or this a first?
Yes, it's it's to be voted on tonight.
Is there a motion uh for ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty?
Yes, Diana Herbie, I would move adoption of ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty.
Second, more?
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number fifteen uh dash twenty twenty. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is, I think these annual appropriation ordinances, amending these are are routine. This one is for additional funding needed to extend the tenure of the IT services intern. To assist with several computer needs the city's already incurred. There's also some additional funding to comply with the city manager's contract since he has complied with. Conditions outlined in his contract. There are also two employees that we overlooked in the budget process that earned longevity, so this is correcting that. There's also a police department grant that was received by Walmart, and so this helps to um. To secure that grant. Uh and then there are additional costs for the collections of um for um. Monies due to the auditor to help with the Carolyn Park TIF. And uh Parkwood TIF. And then there's some additional capital improvements to the uh city's HVAC system. So I would urge adoption of this amendment. To the, this amendment to the ordinance, or the appropriations ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance fifteen twenty twenty?
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes. Ordinance fifteen twenty twenty passes six zero. Next is a motion, Councilwoman Holt?
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full. And re resolutions number eleven dash twenty twenty through fourteen dash twenty twenty by title only.
Second?
Been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and re. Resolutions number eleven twenty twenty through fourteen twenty twenty by title only. Is there any discussion?
Only that these resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please? Call the roll on a motion to suspend?
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Motion to suspend pass six zero. Next item on the agenda is item K, resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty. Would the court please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty. Delegating authority to make declarations of official intent and allocations. With respect to reimbursements of temporary advances during fiscal year twenty twenty. Made for capital improvements and acquisitions. For municipal purposes to be made from subsequent borrowings.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Irving?
I would move adoption of resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt resolution eleven dash twenty twenty. Is there discussion?
Uh yes, um sometimes when we go out for uh bond money, before we get the bond money, it may be necessary. To make some expenditures. This legislation would allow us to reimburse ourselves for those um. Monies that we spend before we actually receive the bond money. And so I would urge adoption of this uh resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on resolution eleven dash twenty twenty?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Resolution eleven dash twenty twenty passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is resolution L. Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty, item L, uh would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement. With Lebanon Ford Incorporated. For the lease purchase of three police vehicles through the state of Ohio bidding process.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Ness?
Uh yes, I motion um for adoption of resolution twelve dash twenty twenty.
There's second. Been moved in second that we adopt resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Ness?
Um just very briefly, this um was already included for the twenty twenty budget. Uh this would provide for three um replacement vehicles for the police department. All twenty twenty um Fords uh in this agreement with Lebanon Ford. And um it'd also be done through the state of Ohio bidding process. The amount that would be paid in full will be at the conclusion of the um. The lease purchase agreement. And that total amount is one thousand, uh I'm sorry, one hundred nine thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on resolution twelve dash twenty twenty?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Resolution twelve twenty twenty passes six zero. Next item, item N, resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty. Clerk, please read this resolution by title only.
Resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty, accepting the bid of Atleta Incorporated for the twenty twenty street program.
Is there a motion, Councilman Sylvester?
Yes, I motion to adopt the resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty.
Second, more?
Been moved in second that we adopt resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty. Any discussion, Councilman Sylvester?
Yes, um. Twenty twenty road projects, uh seven CO bids were received. And opened on February the twentieth, twenty twenty for the twenty twenty street program. With the base bids totaling ranging from two hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty cents. To three hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Uh while reviewing the bids, errors were found in three of the bids, tabulations. But uh it did not affect the overall uh bid outcome. The streets included in the twenty twenty street program are Southland Road. Kemper to Rose, uh Southland Road, Sharon to Ballinger. And Fresno Road. Staff has recommend recommended that this project be awarded to Atleta. Incorporated. As a little bidder. In the total bid amount of. Three hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and forty cents. Which includes the base bid of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty cents. This plus the alternate uh. Southland, Ballinger, West Sharon. In the amount of one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents. This project is included in the twenty twenty street and stormwater budgets. And with this uh a move that we adopt. On this resolution number thirteen twenty dash twenty twenty.
Any other discussion?
I have a, I have a quick question, what were the um, what were the errors specifically?
I had a request uh from the mayor, uh from the city manager. On the uh the bid errors. I got that reporting to date. As far as. Making a uh a clarity on. On all of the errors, I don't have that uh that app, that. Marked out and identified totally. But uh. I had discussed that uh with uh. Uh I'm trying to call out the uh.
Dave.
Can't get his name in mind.
Dave.
Dave, yeah. We uh, we had this discussion on the phone today. But this printout wasn't a part of the uh. The packet that I received, so. Didn't get the details on that uh until this evening.
Any other questions or? Discussions on this item, or or Don, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll be glad to give you a complete uh. Give everyone a complete rundown of the of where the errors were, uh but they weren't substantive.
I thought that, I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't recall a time when we've reviewed this. And um we've seen anything where there's errors, especially amongst three of them. That's all.
Normally, it's a calculation error in terms of a, you know, length of a measurement error. Or a math error. And uh. In this case, um. You know, there there, it it really is, it is an odd situation. But um. That's why we we hire our consultants and our engineers to to make sure the math is right. And the ma- you know, if they're bidding, if they if they say they're gonna do a street and and they they think it's eighty feet and it really is a hundred. You know, we need to make sure that they know that that. The the unit prices are the same, but they need to make sure they're they've got the the length and so forth correct. So.
So then you do you go back to, do you go back to those companies and say, hey, um. You know, we found these errors and we just want to make sure that everything's in alignment because. It's still a contract even if the final numbers are the same, but like you said, that there's distance uh incongruities. Do they, do they still have to come back and correct those?
They can come back and correct them, but if it's just a math error. But um. Again, it didn't affect who was who was the low bidder on this project.
Any other questions? Hearing none, the clerk call the roll on. Resolution tw- uh thirteen twenty twenty.
Holt?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Resolution thirteen twenty twenty passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item N. Resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty, would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty. Accepting the bid of Rack and.
Are you still there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can.
Chuck froze.
Yeah, Chuck is frozen.
Denise, uh while I'm looking at Rofflin, I think somebody else there, I don't know.
We can hear you.
You're now.
We can see you.
How are you? Yeah.
I would be read uh fourteen by title only.
Resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty. Accepting the bid of Rack and Baller. Escavating for the Grandin Avenue resurfacing.
Is there a motion, Mr. Sylvester?
Yes, I have a motion to accept the uh resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty.
Been moved in second that we adopt resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty. Any discussion, Mr. Sylvester?
Yes, for the grand uh. Grandin resurfacing project. Three CO bids were received and opened on February twentieth, uh twenty twenty. For the uh Grandin Avenue CDVG resurfacing project. As follows, uh Rack and Ballinger excavating. An amount of seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty-two cents. Uh JK Murler, Murra. Eighty thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents. And Mount Pleasant Black Topping, one hundred and three dollars, five hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-five cents. Staff is recommending the award of the project to the lower bidder. Uh Rack and Baller ex- excavating in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty-two cents. This project is on the twenty twenty street and stormwater budget. The city is receiving thirty thousand from the Hamilton County CDVG. Community Development Block Grant Program toward this project. Included in this, in the council package is a letter from our city engineer, C D Consultants. Which provide more information uh of this item. And with that, a move that we accept the resolution.
Is there any other discussion? There are none with the clerk please call the roll on resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty passes six zero. Um, Mr. Sylvester, if you would, please, would you uh, maybe give Dave a call and you and he go through that uh, those, those everything that you had on the last one?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we spoke today, but it was, it was out of time where I couldn't get it in detail while I was at work.
Would you do that and then maybe any information that you get, uh, just pass it on everybody?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Don, do you have anything for the uh, anything to report for the good of the order?
Well, I, I would, um, in fact, a short week, but um, do have, I wanted to give everybody a COVID update. But what I'll do is I'll just send you an, uh, I'll send you an email with a, with a memo.
Okay.
The biggest department questions we have were, uh, most everything stayed the same in terms of where we're at. The um, the, the, the real change is that for the tax department, again, we're still in the July fifteenth, twenty twenty extension date. We're working up uh, current procedures for residents to file and pay their taxes. But we're also going to be sending out a letter to anyone who has a um, you don't have to wait on the letter, you can call us as well. Um, anyone who has a payment plan under the city's, for the city's local income tax, we would um, we're going to do a four-month uh, payment deferral for March, April, May, and June. And we're gonna uh, we're also going to defer any interest and penalties that would be accruing. They're not going to continue to accrue in those ti, for those four payments. Those four payments will just be deferred, we're not waiving them. But they'll be placed at the end of the existing payment plan. That takes a little bit of pressure off everyone. But uh, so that'll be s, some more information on that. The big information is that everyone wants to know, again, is reopening plans. And um, while we're uh, able to maintain many of the functions of governments via altered work schedules and off-site locations, um, we will eventually need to obviously reopen our buildings and our services to the public on a one-on-one or a face-to-face situation. Our, of course, we, as we do this, our primary concern will be to continue, um, while this happens, the safety and health of our employees and the public. Uh, to accomplish this, we'll need to use a phased-in approach to bring back our employees and to open up our facilities to the public. Uh, clearly, programming and services will not return to the public, which would, they would consider normal right away. However, all of us understand the importance of a smooth and effective transition. So we have uh, we've charged each department to start planning and to come up with plans to return their opposite operations to what would be normal with the goal of opening up at least on a limited basis by Monday, May fourth. Uh, this, you know, what the new normal will look like still remains to be seen. There's still a lot of information out there. Uh, it seems like May fourth is the day, so we're planning on a May fourth date. Again, we will transition into all of this in a slow and steady and ramped-up procedure. Each function of government, the how, the when, the where, uh, a service or program is performed and delivered is going to be reviewed. Necessary, we'll take additional steps to ensure the safety of our employees and the citizens before a function returns to what we would consider a new normal. Uh, all of our decisions again are based on guidance from the federal, state, and local health experts. We'll implement the appropriate policies and procedures regarding um, our facilities where necessary. For instance, uh, we may provide plexiglass barriers in some areas that don't currently have them. We're gonna establish safe social distancing policies throughout our offices to make sure that uh, our employees are separated properly. And we want to guarantee everyone's safety during this uh, this, this ramp up to get things back to normal. Uh, but rest assured, we're planning. We'll take every necessary step we need to keep our employees and our citizens safe. And uh, while we're continuing to provide city services that our citizens expect and deserve. So I'll send you an email that has the, a memo that has a lot more detail than this. And if I'll, any questions, please feel free to give me a call.
Okay, thanks, sir. Uh, just for, just for the uh, the our, our citizens who may be watching and are listening, uh, as you may recall, the council is, technically, we're on recess right now. This meeting is not, even though it's on a day where we normally would have had a regular council meeting, this is a special meeting. When council is on recess and has special meetings, obviously, our agenda changes. There are some of the things that we would normally do on a regular meeting, like presentations or uh, committee, uh, standing committee reports and so forth. Uh, we, we do not do in special meetings. Also, uh, in terms of uh, regular meetings, we normally have a spot on the agenda for comments from the public. Uh, that does not happen in, in special meetings, but we, uh, we have urged people who might have questions regarding this meeting to email those to us and uh, at some point, either at the next regular meeting or beforehand, somebody will get back to you. As far as when our next regular, regular scheduled meeting will be, um, as the city manager just said, even if we get, even if we get back up and running to some extent by May fourth, which would be our first meeting in May, it is very unlikely that we would have a physical face-to-face meeting on that date. So if there is a meeting in May, uh, the fourth, or May the fourth, it would uh, more than likely be another of these uh, virtual meetings. Uh, is there anything else to come before the good of the order? Is there any business to come before the good of the order? There are none, and this meeting is adjourned.